So I'd like to call the September 3, 2019, meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board took order. So those attendees are Jonathan Torsho, Luma Rovito, George Kingston, Russell Denver, Connie Brothers, and Bethany Yeho. And pursuant to match down along, I need to inform the public that we are being filmed by LCAT. And if there's anyone else in the room who is recording this meeting, would you please state your name? Hearing none, I would like to hear a motion to take item four out of order.
So moved.
I'll second.
So a motion seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Connie, item four.
Item four, okay. Quick.
Nothing happened.
So mixed-use zoning, update on bylaws subcommittee progress regarding case ZN 2019-01, mixed-use district petition by applicant M&amp;A Long Meadow LLC to amend the zoning bylaw by adding a new zoning district for mixed-use and to change the zoning district map for the town of East Long Meadow. And also case ZN 2019-02, same location, 330 Chestnut Street, a petition by applicant M&amp;A Long Meadow LLC to consider a zoning change at 330 Chestnut Street on a 40.35 acre site from the industrial Garden Park zoning district to a mixed-use zoning district. My update for you is that this, these two cases have been referred to the subcommittee, the Town Council Subcommittee, and the meeting will take place on the 9th of September. And that's what I have for you.
What time is that meeting?
The time has not been determined, I think?
10 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
So we have the approval of amendments for August 20, 2019.
Motion to approve.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say nay. Lou abstains.
Yep, I abstain.
So that item passes. So Connie, what I'd like to do is really kind of turn it over to you now.
Oh, well, thank you very much, sir. We have some guests this evening. The first person on our agenda this evening is Laurie Tanner. She is the Senior Planner for Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and she's going to provide some information for discussion for the town of East Long Meadows affordable housing inventory and the Baker Polito Housing Choice Initiative. So Laurie, may come to the table.
Hello.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good. Yeah, so actually, this is a huge subject, and we could probably, you know, take the whole hour just talking about it. So I wanted to get a little bit of a sense from you what your specific interests and concerns are right now, so that I know kind of where to start. And also, I'll just preface everything by saying that whatever we don't discuss tonight, we can address later through some free technical assistance that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission offers communities. So if you have a paid planner position, then you can have up to two days or 15 hours of free technical assistance to work on any individual project. So, you know, I can continue to research these things for you and come back and let you know. But in the meantime, what is your main concern? Is it how to comply with affordable housing regulations? Or is it that you want to be a housing choice community, you want to apply for grants? You know, I had thought it was more the affordable housing direction, but then you said something about housing choice. So that's kind of a different, a whole different area.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The planning board hasn't really discussed this, okay, at any length. I think the only discussion that's been in the last year is with the mixed-use district increasing our housing stock by a significant amount over a period of years and putting us deeper in the hole, basically, in terms of affordable housing. But we have not come up with any goals. We've never really discussed this as a board. Okay? So I'm not sure what you're looking for from us.
Well, if I may, through the chair, what I'm looking for is knowing that the mixed-use zoning district proposal is before the subcommittee and then going to be recommended to Town Council. There were some questions in regard to how this impacts our numbers. So right now, if you could tell the planning board how many affordable housing units we have, where we stand, where we need to go, and then describe the Baker Polito Initiative. Because this is a new approach, this is a relatively new approach to fulfilling our affordable housing inventory requirements.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that is going to be the direction to go, but anyway, the other question I have for you is, this is a mixed-use zoning proposal, is it a specific development proposal, or is it just for the zone? So, in other words, do you have an actual developer?
We have a developer, we do not have a site plan.
So this is imminent, is what you're saying? There's some kind of a development imminent?
And I think the other thing I'd be interested in knowing is, how many communities have met the goal?
Thanks, Laurie.
And what is the penalties for not reaching the goal?
Okay, I don't know the exact number of communities that have met the goal. I think it's, in our area, it's very few. It's the cities that have a lot of-
Define few.
[laughing]
Less than 5%? Less than 10%?
I don't know exactly. I don't have that number, I can find that out. So how many communities have met the goal of 10%? And then what was?
What's the penalty if you don't?
Oh, the penalty? So there is no penalty. There's more, it's more that there's an advantage of having the 10% because if you do, what this describes here is, it just gives you a little summary of chapter, very brief summary of chapter 40B, because the regs are like this. Essentially, this law provides for the ability of a community to kind of waive some of the zoning regulations for a development and that has affordable housing in it. But if you don't want that affordable housing development, which some communities don't, and you deny the permit, if you already have 10% of your housing in subsidized housing, you have the right to do that. The developer might still appeal it, but they will have fewer, less recourse. So it's a preventive thing. And, you know, and one of the ways actually of achieving the goal is to sort of create the conditions yourself that you want for some kind of a comprehensive permit. So for instance, this mixed-use zoning could be, could provide affordable units, and that could meet some of your need.
So I would think the public is probably not as informed as they might want to be on the different types of affordable housing. So I think most people might just visualize a large apartment complex that is quote subsidized. Maybe you can just inform the public about all the different varieties of how something becomes, you know, affordable in the eyes of the state.
Well, affordable in the eyes of the state is that someone with 80% or less of the median, area median income can afford it. And the form of that housing unit can be anything. It can be an accessory apartment, it can be a small-sized, single-family unit, it could be a two-family unit, could be townhouses or a small apartment development. There have been many, many different ways of doing this more recently. So the physical form is less critical. That can be shaped. But it does need to meet certain income guidelines and have restrictions on it.
And senior housing and elders' house housing counts toward the affordability?
It can, it can. If it completely restricts any children, then it might not. But generally, if you have, if you have a requirement for at least one person over 55, you're severely limiting the number of children that tend to be in the households.
Could you restate that? Because I think that's something that may be confusing for folks.
Yeah. So DHCD has been pretty clear that they do not want to include, and I guess, you know, it was sort of fuzzier and it's getting firmer kind of thing, where they don't want to allow anything on the subsidized housing inventory that restricts children. And so if you're saying it's 55-plus, or, you know, old 65-plus, if you say no children, no one under 18 is allowed, then that's not going to be accepted. If you say it has, you know, at least one member of the household has to be 55 or 65, that's more likely to be accepted, and it's very likely there aren't young children in the house. So, you know, it's not young families with, you know, three kids going into the school system. Kids are usually grown.
So I'm looking, so the list of properties that you gave us are all counting toward our, so I'm a little involved on Brownstone Gardens, and there's 172 units of elder housing. And I don't think there's a child, well, there's anybody under the age of 50 who lives there. So I'm questioning that.
Well, that may be, that may be like an older situation where, you know, in the past, they may have been more lenient in that regard, as far as the age requirements.
And you have, you have group homes. So are group homes, let's say, from, you know, CHD or recovery units or whatever, so those are counted toward the affordable housing?
They are. And they are reported to DHCD by those agencies.
Not just spending too much time asking questions, if anyone else is-
And I have, I mean, I have all kinds of stuff to hand out to you, to give to Connie, to more info, all kinds of [laughing]. So before I go, you know, I just want to make sure I pass along, I forwarded you something in the email, I have copies of that, I have a requesting new units form for, I have a section of the Pioneer Valley Regional Housing Plan that is just, it's just a brief section that just explains all this stuff pretty easily, pretty clearly and concisely, that would be nice to read.
So could you spend five minutes on the Baker Polito Housing Choice Initiative?
Yes. So that is really effectively going to help Eastern Mass more than Western Mass. And that's why I didn't even realize that you wanted to address it, because they have, because they acknowledged that at one point, they did make some changes, and they made some other provisions for communities with 7,000 population or under, which you aren't. So you're kind of in the middle, you know? You're not, you're not a big city or a big town, a big city, and you're not a little rural town. So what they're doing is they're offering incentives for communities to build more housing. And in some communities, that may not be the biggest need, the need may be more the affordable housing. I don't have enough of these.
Full share.
And the thresholds are way too high for you. I was looking at your housing over the past 10 years, and you just don't have the number of new housing units that would be required to meet either of these criteria, as far as I can tell. And then even if you did, you then have to meet a whole bunch of best practices, which are probably doable, but, you know, that's a whole series of steps that you would have to go through. And then you would get funding to assist with housing. I'm just not sure that that's what your needs are right now.
So as you're moving forward, you'll be working closely with Connie to kind of-
Yeah.
Connie's direction on what our community might need and moving forward with that.
Yes, but I will bring you updates and put information before you, before we move in a one-direction or multi-direction. But I think, as I said, there was some concern with the create, with the potential for creating a mixed-use zoning district and how that would impact our numbers, and therefore, do we approve this zoning change because of the impact it will have? So I wanted Laurie to come in and describe where we are from someone other than myself, who's, this is her area of expertise.
Uh, becoming an area of expertise.
And so we'll make sure that we take all this material, and so as our Town Council Subcommittee reviews this district, and I know that you're right, there are some people who wanted to know how this might impact, where we are, what our percentages are, and what the impact might be, so it's great material to know.
So other than that, you're not concerned about housing or affordable housing or?
Fellow board members? Personally, I am not overly concerned that we're going to get comprehensive permits coming in here.
Yeah.
Because of the nature of the real estate market right now.
Yeah.
But, so I, you know, I've been on this board 12 years, and I haven't heard anybody really come in and pushing for new affordable housing, other than Brownstone Gardens, which does want to expand. Okay?
So that right there?
Whether it would be affordable or not is another issue, because they have both market rate and affordable, right there.
I'm correct, Chris?
You are correct. So, you know, and their plans are ridiculous right now, as I understand it, because of access issues.
And the other thing about-
A work in progress.
If a comprehensive permit, you know, if that was a concern, it seems like the best approach is to be proactive and start working with the developer and finding the right site. You know, you can actually designate a site that you think is most appropriate, or several sites, so, you know, if that became a concern, there's definitely ways to address that. And also, if Emily is going to be talking about my colleague at the Planning Commission, if she's going to be talking about your master plan, and if housing includes, if a housing chapter is included in that, then, you know, it could be arranged so that that chapter sort of set the stage for a housing production plan, which also would help you with some of these things. So we could work together on that.
Thank you very much.
All right. You're welcome.
I'm still looking to you, Connie, for the next item.
Thank you. So we now have the introduction of Emily Slotnick. She is here for Catherine Vate and Senior Planner, and Emily is the Senior Planner of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for the discussion of the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program contract and scope of work for Master Plan updates.
Hi.
Do you want to introduce the members of the Master Plan Committee?
I think this is an opportune time.
At the same time, I have them come forward.
Gentlemen, come to the table and have a seat.
Do introductions.
We are missing two members. One is, has a football?
Hockey.
Hockey? Hockey practice this evening, but he should be here about 7:15. But gentlemen, please introduce yourselves to the board, and please, please tell the board a little bit about your background and why you've expressed your interest in participating in the Master Plan Subcommittee.
Sure. I'm Connie Rocher. I live in town, I've grown up here my entire life. I currently work at Big Y as a software developer, so hopefully I can bring some community and tech expertise to the future of the town. Thank you for volunteering. Thank you.
All right. My name is John Cooper. I've lived here for about 13 years, moved here from Los Angeles, where I've seen areas that have not been planned well, which is one of the reasons that I left. Funny thing, I'm also in software development. I work from home, and so it's a little isolating. And I'm just interested in helping to see where the town's going to go over the next 20 years. My kids are going to grow up here, and there you go.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay.
All right. So just, Emily, if I may, people have asked me, what is a master plan? And a master plan is also known as a comprehensive plan. And a master plan sets forth goals, analyzes existing conditions and development trends, describes and illustrates a vision for the physical, social, and economic characteristics of the community in years to come, and provides policies and guidelines intended to implement the vision. The master plan is a guiding document for the municipality's zoning bylaw coordinates. Under Massachusetts State Enabling Legislation, Chapter 41, Section 81D, "A planning board established in any city or town under Section 81A shall make a master plan of such city or town or such part or parts thereof as said board may deem advisable, and from time to time may extend or perfect such plan." Our plan was written in 1976.
I was looking on the website today, and I was like, is this really, or is it a typo?
So I ask you to ask yourself where you were in 1976, and how we are today, and you may be able to clearly comprehend why we have a need to update our master plan.
I don't think these two were born. I was not. I was three. You were three.
So Emily, please.
Yeah, so I mean, I think as far as what I'm here to talk about with the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program and how that is going to work with your master plan, the master plan part was very well said by Connie. And what I can add to that is sort of explaining the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, which is a grant that you have received, the town has received from the state Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And the grant, this year's grant, it's sort of a two-part grant. You've got part one, it's the planning phase. So you'll be, you are funded to engage in a planning process to look at the impacts of climate change, where the town is vulnerable, where the town has strengths, and what are some priority actions to take to reduce those vulnerabilities to the impacts of climate Before I get any deeper into that, I want to do a quick segue back to the master plan, because the nine required chapters of a master plan do not include a chapter on sustainability, on energy efficiency, or greenhouse gas reductions, or on climate resilience or adaptation. So the MVP program is going to start to fill one of those holes. And there's also going to be a lot about the MVP program that you're going to be able to incorporate into other parts of the master plan update. As Connie said, this plan being sold, it sort of remains to be seen how much is going to be able to be recycled at all, or whether we're going to be really starting from scratch. But the MVP process is at least going to give you a framework to bring people together, sort of talk about the fact that you're engaging in a new planning process, that you're going to start this discussion around climate impacts, and you're going to expand it as you go as part of the master plan process. So now back to the MVP process itself and this one-year planning grant that you've got. The MVP focuses on one day-long, eight-hour workshop. Now, the state allows you to break that up into two four-hour workshops if the town chooses. Connie has expressed interest in that design. So in either case, this is an invite-only stakeholder workshopping event that's a very, it's a very tight agenda that we go through, and it's a really results-focused session where you go through those topics that I mentioned earlier. You start with identifying the climate-induced natural hazards that are of greatest concern to the town. You go into identifying your features, your assets, your environmental assets, your infrastructure assets, your social assets, also some, any of those areas where you have weaknesses or where climate is posing a unique threat. And then you get into coming up with action ideas, project ideas, where you need to update your regulatory code, your zoning, your stormwater bylaw, et cetera, to meet the challenges that are now faced by climate change. There's a lot of overlap with what we did just a few years back in your hazard mitigation plan. It's going to look a lot like that in some areas, but this goes beyond that. And also, I don't know if any of you were part of the hazard mitigation plan. I've been doing hazard mitigation planning for a really long time, and I can tell you that I have never worked on a hazard mitigation plan that has a third of the amount of stakeholder involvement as the MVP process does. And that's really what the state is, I'll say, putting forward as the shining accomplishment of this program. And the design of this program is to bring together partners that don't otherwise sit down and have these conversations. So that's another way that I think it's a really good foundation to kick off the master planning process. So aside from the workshop, there's some background work that your consultants do. PVPC has been hired as your consultant for this process. And then after the workshop has completed, there's a very, very short report that really just documents the process in that day or those two four-hour events. And then there's a public, a public session to really roll all of that out to the public and ask for public input as well. In most cases, we'll do a survey, a public survey in advance of the workshop to try to bring that voice in before we get the stakeholders sitting down. And then at the end of the day, you submit to the state, and you, once you've gone through that planning process, you become eligible for implementation action funds, and that's the second part. I mentioned it's a two-part sort of program. Once you've gone through this process, you've become MVP certified, and you become eligible to apply for the action grants. The last round of action grants made individual applicants eligible to receive $2 million for any single project. If you, if you applied with, as a regional project with a neighboring municipality, for instance, there was a cap of $4 million. And it's a 25% match, so it is, those numbers are really attractive, but at the end of the day, if you want a $2 million project, you're also going to find that you're looking for 250,000, or, sorry, 500,000 of the town, town's money. So that's MVP in a nutshell. I'd love to answer more questions about that. I will sort of apologize in advance that we don't have too much to say about the master planning process at this point, except before I ask for questions, one thing, Connie, that I wanted to mention that we discussed today. MVP encourages towns to request, when they, when they sign up for this planning grant program, it's sort of a thing, you have to apply, but everyone who applies is going to get funded for the planning grant because the state wants every municipality in the state to go through this process. But they encourage municipalities during their application for the planning grant to suggest if there's any other planning process that could be done in tandem or in parallel with the MVP, to request for additional funding. And EEA has been pretty generous with that. We helped with the application for the town of East Long Meadow for the MVP planning grant. We wrote about the need for additional funding to do a parallel master planning process. Given master plans are pretty hefty-ticket items for, in terms of the amount of work that they would need, and it was probably not clear that the state would have been able to put up money for the entire thing, but they did express the interest in considering funding part of it. So I'm working with Connie to put together the scope of work to send back to the state to see if they are still willing to put up additional funds on top of what they have awarded you for the MVP planning process to support some of the master planning process. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Do you want to add to anything before we close that up?
No, not at this time. I think that will be covered. We did other initiatives.
I may. I've been following this process for quite some time, because I'm on the United Executive Committee at PVPC, and watching what other towns are doing. And I guess my question is, trying to wrap my mind around what hazards we are looking for, vulnerabilities, I should say, in a non-coastal inland town with no major rivers and not a whole lot of forest land.
Sure.
So what are other towns finding as the kind of vulnerabilities that they're identifying?
Yeah, sure. So non-coastal, so we're not worried about sea level rise, and non-major riviaries, so you're not worried about, say, a 100-year flood on the Connecticut River. But other communities, and as East Long Meadow would find here, other communities have been concerned about localized flooding, stormwater flooding is a big thing. You will see some FEMA maps these days that have- You will see some FEMA maps these days that have a zone for ponding. And in a lot of cases, that's not well-mapped, and in many cases, that's because development leads to stormwater flooding in ways that weren't predictable in 1973 or whenever FEMA maps were done. So, that's one big one. Another would be extreme heat, extreme temperatures, really. Either end of that spectrum can have negative impacts. Extreme heat more on the public health side. That's a big deal, especially when you look at our aging population and any urban population. But here, I'd say more about the aging population and anyone in homes without air conditioning, anyone that needs, requires electricity to support a medical device, for instance. Extreme heat events can cause power outages, as can extreme cold events, as can extreme weather events. And so, that'll bring me to the next one, which would be increased instances of extreme weather, whether that's hurricanes, whether it's just high wind events, increased instances of microbursts, things like that. So, it's starting to sound a lot like a hazard mitigation plan again, but we do have new climate projections, new climate data from the state, so we're able to take it a little bit further and hone in a little bit, with a little bit more accuracy on the populations and the infrastructure that's going to be at greatest risk.
Thank you. Because the word vulnerability is kind of fuzzy.
Yeah.
Want to know what kind of specific things we're going to be looking at?
No, absolutely.
I was going to say, if I may, and I spoke with Felix Bacheon, who was our sewer and water, what is the, sewer and water?
Superintendent?
Assistant.
Yes. And I asked him what type of vulnerabilities we might be susceptible to in East Long Meadow, and his first words were ice, the ice storms that we've had impacted the town severely. And he also reminded me of the tornado that blew through a couple of years ago, and the microbursts that we seem to have more frequently. So, they're here. I work right alongside the DPW, and I know there are days when they are not, they haven't stopped working just in response to culverts that have flood, you know, that have been damaged due to the increase in water, and just many, many instances that people just aren't aware of.
More rain in a shorter amount of time is creating deficiencies in culverts that were not previously deficient. An increase in the frequency of the freeze-thaw cycle over the course of one winter is creating, like, the mega potholes that we've never seen anything like before. That's not the DPW's fault. That's because the chemistry of the asphalt that we use cannot withstand the types of temperature fluctuations that we're getting now. Vector-borne diseases, another public health thing. So, our ticks, if we're having more mild winters, we're not having as long, as deep, as long-deep freezes as we once had. Some insects are not dying back the way they had in the past, so, you know, Lyme disease is maybe more of a problem. I can go on, but the reason, the design of this program is to really identify, so Connie will put together a very small team, which will be the core team, to identify who, which 20 to 30 stakeholders need to be sitting around a table together in this room to talk about these things, and identify what are the greatest concerns for East Long Meadow. They're going to be different than your neighbors. A lot of them will be the same, but there will be unique concerns just based on who you are and where you are, and that's what the process is about.
So, as I understand, we have a year to do this?
Correct.
June 30th of next year.
Correct.
So, the MVP component of a master plan would be done within, by June 30th?
Yeah, absolutely. And what I have been doing with MVP is encouraging communities to start off with a public survey online and print some hard copies so it's available to people who aren't using computers for one reason or another. And I think that with an eye towards the master plan, we can do some really good work with that survey that sort of gets you into, gets the ball rolling on both processes. We did something similar with the city of East Hampton. They were looking towards doing their master plan. They weren't as far along as really getting started as you guys are here, but everything we did during MVP had this sort of, this sort of understanding that, you know, we want this to be able to feed seamlessly into a master plan. So, and the survey was a big part of that. They didn't get started until later, so you guys are, you're in a good position.
Do you have, like, a boilerplate survey that you use with towns?
I did, until we got further into the process, and I think it was like the fourth town that we tried to use that boilerplate with, it, we realized that we were just, we weren't using any of the boilerplate in each town because we kept changing, we kept changing it so much. I'll certainly send, I can, probably none of them will be live, but I can send Connie some.
Just to get us started, suggestions, the kind of questions you're looking for.
Sure.
And I'll send them to you, and you can give me some feedback. And what I was also looking for from my planning board are the names of stakeholders you would like to see participate, people you know in the town, the community that might have interest, you think might be interested in offering their creative input. Likewise, the subcommittee also, and if I could collect those names, I'll put together a spreadsheet and go from there. So, maybe by the end of this week, maybe by Friday, you could do that for me, just email them individually, not?
It might be helpful, maybe after this meeting, to share, I have a list that I've drawn up of sort of the types of people that you might want as your stakeholders of these things. So, I'll share that with you, Connie. I'll see if I can access the file tonight, and I'll send it over, if not, in the morning.
Thank you.
Just to help you all think about who you might get. There's going to be sort of the usual suspects, I think, that will be pretty easy to think about, your fire chief, your DPW super, member of the planning board, member of the conservation commission, et cetera. But to really embrace what this program is offering, you want to think more broadly, and that's, I think it can be more challenging to think of, who are your community leaders? Who are, who are doing, who's out there doing good work with a lot of people paying attention to what they're doing and saying, but that might not have an elected title, or that might not be a paid staff, or something like that. So, hopefully, what I send will help you all think about it that way, too.
All right. As it relates to MVP? Thank you.
Great.
Okay. Now, we should engage Connie into a larger discussion of a master plan and what you envision as a process, and so I'll let you go.
Well, thank you. So, my hope is that everyone has had an opportunity to review the 1976 master plan at the table.
Is that available?
Yes. And I had also sent a list of links that would connect you to other communities with a population range of 14,000 to 17,000 in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and you could see in turn what they are doing for their master plan updates, or what they may not have done for their master plan. So, to give you some insight and perspective on formatting a master plan, because essentially there's a template, as Emily said, there are elements of the master plan that belong in every plan.
So, what are the nine additional steps?
And, you know, I don't have my elements in front of me, but I can give you a rough idea.
Okay.
What you want to consider is land use, transportation or circulation, community facilities, housing, economic development, critical and sensitive areas, or open space, natural hazards, and agricultural land. So, those are generally the components of the master plan. And on the state website, it'll actually list, excuse me, under Massachusetts general law, it'll actually list the elements of the master plan. I provided PowerPoints to everybody, and it lists them succinctly in an order, but that's what we'd be looking at. So, if you can recall what maybe piqued your interest when you were looking at the PowerPoint and saying to me, gosh, I would really like to work on infrastructure, because that's my strength, or that's my forte, or even my interest. What we're doing with the department heads is we're meeting once a month, and they, too, will be offering insight and input to the planning board in crafting this master plan because they have a direct relationship with their demographic mix. So, they're also going to provide comments. And Carolyn Brennan is actually here tonight, and she's with, she's our director of the Council on Aging, and she has her finger on the pulse of the population that she works closely with, and she can actually offer a great deal of information and expertise on where we're going with our housing needs. And maybe we could have Carolyn come up to the table?
Certainly one of our finest department heads.
Yes.
Be happy to have her.
That's a nice introduction.
So, we touched on housing earlier with Lori Tanner with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and I'm sorry Carolyn had a conflict, so she came in probably when Emily was beginning her presentation, so she missed the overview that Lori had provided. But Carolyn, can you just tell us what's going on with our housing needs in our community or our aging population?
Sure.
Please, thank you.
And I know Russ and I have spoken about that as well. I think the biggest concern for older adults in East Long Meadow is they want to stay here. And if they're living in a bigger home, they want to downsize, but there really is nowhere to go. We don't really have a place for them to downsize. It's more so for those that can't afford the high-end condos, nor, but their over-income for the subsidized housing. So, it's a huge gap. And so, Connie knows that, and Russ knows as well, that's one of my biggest concerns. We did do a survey, and also Brownstone did a survey of what, you know, what are seniors looking for? And they are looking for, they're willing to pay a significant amount of money, you know, in our eyes, between $1,200 and $1,500 a month for a rental. They don't want to own anymore. They don't want, they want a two-bedroom, laundry on the same floor, and a carport or a garage. So, Connie and I knows that that's a real concern of mine, as well as caregivers, children living in their own home, who, and I know there's probably talk about that later on, who want to have either an in-law apartment or something else on the property where an older, a mom, a dad could live. Connie also knows my big concern is blockability and sidewalks in the community, so that we can keep some connectivity, which we think is there, but it's really not. You can't get from the senior center to the center of town safely at all. So, those are my biggest concerns.
Coming from Los Angeles, I'm sure you, the mobility issue is vital.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And just, I drove up and down Conover Street four times today, and I marvel at their cycloc system, in which we had a cycloc system that was even remotely close to our neighbors. Yeah. So, could you also then talk a little bit about the demographics of the seniors in town?
Sure.
Like, the percentage of the population in town? Is it growing? Is it, you know?
So, we're going to see a significant growth in the older population, and that's a national statistics, probably even more so more globally, where you're going to see more seniors. This is the first time in history where we're seeing more people over 60 than 20 and under. So, this is, and that's not going to change. So, that issue is going to be, it's going to be addressed so many things. We are looking at getting certification for a dementia-friendly community because we are dealing with that a lot more. That's going to kind of be in conjunction to an age-friendly community, but we really feel, because that's what our focus is, is that needs to be addressed as well, and so we're getting stakeholders involved with all of that. But I, I don't even think anybody can comprehend that population shift. It's going to affect the schools, but most significantly, it's going to affect the seniors. And again, like I said earlier, seniors need to be able to age in place, and we need to be able to provide that opportunity. So, we serve about 25% of seniors outside of East Long Meadow. A big part of that are those who had to move to Springfield or another community to get a small ranch, to get a small, a smaller home, because there isn't anything like that available in East Long Meadow. So, we are going to see a huge, we're at, I think we're at about 21%. That's going to significantly climb, I think it's estimated to be over 30% in probably 10 years.
So, these type of demographics are things that the master plan committee are certainly going to be privy to, so that when you do your planning and look at the types of recreation, housing, you know, economic development, so forth, you can take those demographics into consideration as you are making recommendations for a plan. So, you said you want, you know, your kids are going to grow up here, so they're going to be here for the next 20 years. Well, look at the demographics and see how that all plays into each other, which I think is a really fascinating, very, very fascinating process. So, Connie, what do you envision for a timeframe for creation of a master plan?
So, I would like to have the master plan, I would like to complete it within a year. I think we started talking about it last year, and it, for one reason or another, didn't move forward as quickly as I would have liked to have seen it happen, I think, given our support system here and the team that we've assembled, and we are going to continue to put together. I think it's doable, again, with meeting once a month with the department heads, they'll give you the feedback, you have your work studied. We will draft, it will be drafted in-house, so a great deal of my time will be spent on developing the draft of this master plan.
And how will you be interacting with the master plan committee?
Well, I'll be here, and I will be at the Friday meetings, and also in communication directly with Emily and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, so that's...
And you would envision a number of public hearings, public feedback?
Well, we would do the stakeholder meeting to begin with, and I think what I would like to know from the planning board this evening is, my thought was to have two meetings, two four-hour meetings, one during the day, one in the evening, so that folks who weren't able to attend for one reason or another, an evening meeting could participate during the day, and then move toward having, once we, once we get, once we develop a conceptual plan, if you will, as to where we're going to go next, then we would start the public engagement, public hearing process. So, I think we would be looking at late October. What do you think, Emily?
For the MVP workshop?
Oh, for that, no, I'd say by October, early, early October for the MVP workshop, if not late September.
It's going to be challenging. It's not easy to get that many people to commit to those chunks of time so quickly. If you have your stakeholder list decided upon in the next week, then you could try for early, mid-October.
And these meetings, just to make, they're, when we have a stakeholder meeting, does it require notification in the newspaper?
No, because it is an invite-only, so it's not a public hearing, it's not a public meeting, you're not going to have a forum of any sort.
Okay. All right. Just want to be sure, because do you know how that can impact?
I do, yeah. And that's been a question that's been brought up every MVP process.
Okay.
And we will have that opportunity with the public listening session, which will be after that MVP workshop. And we need to have enough time between the two so that PVPC can sort of synthesize what happened at the workshop and put it into a short report and make that public. We'll first, you know, send it to the town for review and then make that public so that members of the public can look at it before they come to the public hearing. And again, public hearing, it's called a public listening session, and the purpose of that is to discuss the MVP process, discuss what happened at the workshop, share some of the findings, and ask for input on those findings.
So...
And is there a formal adoption of the master plan? And if it is, who is the adopter of the master plan?
So, once the final draft is compiled, then you in turn would have, you would have your public hearing, you would... You would, you would probably want the public to offer some input as you move along, just like you would for any other regulatory change or amendment. But ultimately, it would then, once you approve your final document, it would go to town council for a recommendation and probably, hopefully, be approved, well-received, and then you implement your plan, so.
So when you, so I just want everyone to be very clear about this. So town council can adopt a master plan?
No, it falls under your purview. But Emily, can you help me with this one?
As far as I understand, there is an adoption that happens. And you're making the distinction, Connie, I think, between the planning board adopting it versus the town council adopting it?
Yeah.
I can't say, I can't verify whether that is the case or not, I just don't know.
I guess what I'm trying to get to is you, the town or a town board, or a town board on behalf of the town could adopt a master plan. But then it's up to, really, the elected officials to either choose to follow the plan or choose not to follow the plan.
Yeah, the implementation, right, the master plan being the guiding document. But that guiding document will specify very, very, very clear and specific actions to take, both on the regulatory side and otherwise. And absolutely, it is on the town elects to then make those processes happen.
And one would hope that with all of the public input, stakeholders' input, that they would follow a lot of that.
Right.
Okay. All right. Do either of you have questions about a process, or what your role in the process is going to be?
What you'd like to do? What sections spoke to you?
Not sure at this point.
Okay. It's okay.
Well, for me, I'm very interested in mixed use, anything that will kind of create community, bring lots of people together that would normally not interact. I'm very interested in mobility, sidewalks, things like extending the bike path, since it will be bordering on this mixed-use area, extending it all the way up almost to the Springfield line to be able to have movement all in those directions. Different items like that have all spoken to me. All right. I'm very interested in pretty much all of them, traffic and so on, almost.
So probably the transportation and circulation and the housing elements really speak to you. But what I found with the department heads is some felt that they had, all of the sections, they could chime in pretty much on all of the sections, and others felt a little bit more reserved in their approach. Our infrastructure also includes, Van, come on up.
Okay.
This is member, number three of the subcommittee.
Hi, who are you?
Excuse me, can I let you have a seat? And then, Jan, if you could just introduce yourself to the planning board and the committee members, and how you became interested in the master plan. I'm twisting your arm.
My name is Zank Koynakas. I live in town, 21 Pioneer Circle. I'm a civil engineer. I specialize in traffic, traffic and transportation. Been working in the field for 25 years. I worked for a firm called VHP, and I met Constance one day at a, some sort of seminar, I can't remember what it was, but.
This is transportation, so.
Yeah, we were just talking and thought it'd be interesting to help out with the master plan.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Connie, are we missing anything? Anything more we should add?
Not this evening. I'd like your permission to be able to engage in dialogue with.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. And to give you the feedback. Of course, when I give you something, don't respond to all. You can respond to me, and then that way we can collate, I can collate the information and take it to the table at the subsequent meetings instead of re-cashing, or, you know, you'll at least have some working document that you can, you can.
So for the subcommittee, you are their primary contact in the future? So questions, any scheduling, all those type of things?
And we will be meeting during the regularly scheduled planning board workshops, which are the first Tuesdays of the month. So, of course, people are always welcome to attend those meetings. And if you, we have also, Bethany had created a page on our website for public comments, so people are free to send comments, emails to us in regard to the master plan. The more information we receive, the more we'd like to have. And just remember, when you're sending information, you have to sign your name, so to let us know where it's coming from. And again, we're trying to make this more user-friendly, if you will, and reach as many people as we can. So if you share with your friends and family, please do so. Word-of-mouth advertisement is, or advertising is oftentimes the best form of advertising.
And are we still looking for additional members who might want to join us after watching what's going on here?
If you would like to open the door to, then there you go.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all. We appreciate it. So do we have any other items on our agenda?
Just to sign the covenant for SDB 2019-01 Jeffrey Land South. At the previous meeting, you endorsed the plan, but we had some outstanding documents that had not come back for your signature. Other than that, that is, we are good.
So before I close the meeting, anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Hearing that? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you all.